It is eight eighteen and we are back in session. The next action item on our agenda is the PQB bylaws, open meeting results. And Arthur Lawrence is here to talk with us. Mr. Lawrence.
Let me move up a little bit. We had a meeting on June nineteenth. We had nine people. Have you had somebody? We put out some thanks to Jim Colerano and just some high points. Good thing Heather's not here because she'd probably take over. So leave her portion to the end. I think the most of the discussions was around the extended accident and sick leave. I think you're all familiar with that particular benefit where people get three quarters pay for six months. This is not workers' compensation. This is basically a disability. We don't have any recommendations as far as the board because we have questions and we need to present this for, you know, in twenty days, we're supposed to do something with the bylaw. What came up at the public meeting obviously is not going to allow that to happen. So let me sort of move forward with a couple of questions I would like to ask the board. Does the town want to continue to be sort of a self-insurer? I think that's the major issue here. And, you know, coming from industry a few years ago, of course, we used to buy our own insurance, our own disability insurance, and we had either short term or long term. So I think that's question number one. And there's of course questions around that as far as cost and so on and so forth. Let me just quickly mention and I'll just throw it back to you. We don't want to make any recommendations until we have the data. And we don't have the data at this point. We don't know how much we're spending. We don't know how much a disability plan would cost. We don't know whether the town could afford to supplement or to help the average person, worker, on this. I should also mention before I shut up, most employees who were worried about this were under a CBA, a collective bargaining agreement. So I really didn't apply to them specifically at this time, though I think they were thinking down the road it could. So can I just leave it at that and try to get your thoughts on self-insurance and where you want to see the town heading?
Are you talking about self-insuring across the board or just sort of?
Well, no, I mean, this was just in order, you know, part of the bylaw where we say, you know,
The three-quarter pay.
For any reason, you know, if you go home and had a heart attack, I forbid, or whatever, you're covered for three-quarters of your salary for half a year. I mean, there is definitely a cost here, not only to the town because the town has to take care of that employee, but has to generally find somebody else to replace that employee for that period of time. But that's what I'm talking about. And that is a basic section in the bylaw.
I never liked that section myself because it's so easy to take advantage of. I mean, I'd rather have people have sick time and be able to accrue sick time and use it towards their illnesses. It's in industry, it's in public sector. In that way, you don't use all your time except what is for sick time. If you, otherwise, you use it all up knowing that you've got this extra pot there. And you need to manage your own sick time and we need to give them the ability to do that. Do we have, can we afford this policy anymore?
That's the question we have. We're looking through data.
And how do we compare this to what we would do instead?
Well, we looked at, and Heather and Vicky and Donna and myself, in fact, Colonial Pen is the only company we've had in so far. You guys have had, talked to others. And they presented a program and we didn't get down to the specifics because it's hard because it depends on how much you make, how long the policy would be for, is it for, you know, six months, is it for a year, is it for two weeks? So all that goes into it. But I, you know, that's the type of research that we really need to do specifically. So I can't really tell you. I know, I know in the commercial world, you know, it was, you know, two, four dollars a week, but, you know, that was about six, seven years ago.
I mean, my, oh, can you do all that?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
My comment is, it came out of individual departments budgets. And it, for many years, it was fine, very, little to nobody really used it. I know the last couple of years at the highway department, it was used more so in the last three years than it was my prior twenty-seven years. And what it did to the highway department, it came out of my operation budget. And I was paying for an individual out, but I wasn't getting any work done for that dollar amount. With that being said, I thought it was a great recruitment tool in the past. But I don't think it was a big issue when I was there with sick time. But our sick time, we could not cure any sick time, in other words, you couldn't carry any sick time forward, our personal time. And when I first was hired, the way it was explained to me is because you have this twenty-six week policy. So it was a trade-off. You're not going to, you use it or lose it in that year. But I would consider having the ability to either increase the sick time or being able to cure it if we get rid of the problem as part of the package. Because five, five days of sick time for somebody having a real serious problem is not a lot of time. You know? And it was meant to take care of somebody that was out, was a hard worker, or whatever you want to call it. They're all, you know, I'm not trying, you know, say, people that are abusing it. I don't think it hasn't been abused, but I think that is being used now more because there's operations today that need recuperation. There's people that need, you know, attention and they need an income. But if this was going to be a point of discussion, I think the town should look about increasing the sick time and having it be able to cure like many other towns. So there is a pool of time that could be used in the future.
What about that policy? Tell me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is you could, is it twenty-six weeks? Is that what it is?
Up to twenty-six weeks.
So you're out twenty weeks, you come back for two weeks, you can be out another twenty.
You come back one day, you go back out, starts all over again.
That, that.
That has to change.
That is very attractive to new employees. You're right. But for the wrong reasons, I think. I mean, what I've seen is maybe if we, the town purchases short-term disability for the employees, which normally goes for three months, and then have a long-term disability plan that they can purchase on their own. I mean, I do that and it's dirt cheap money. It's a few dollars a pay period. That way, they'll have short-term covered by us, which is up to three months. And then if they go long-term and they want to buy the policy, they can. And we can keep our sick time like it is because they'll cover it. And it shouldn't cost much. It's all based on usage, you know?
So we do have resources in the community. There's a former selectman that, you know, deals in insurance. I think he's offered his services. I think it would be interesting. Yeah, so it would be interesting to sit down with Heather and sort of come up with options. I mean, I don't know.
We've spoken with, he offers Aflac. So the option there is to look at, or the one I'm thinking of, he brought in card for contact for Aflac. So we have that contact information. We also have another person we're meeting with. I want to say it's either next week or the following week that Donna has set up for another insurance company. We've already sat down with Colonial. So we are sitting down with different companies to see what their different options are. And depending on, you know, what they offer, the ones we think are the better options, we'll have them come and present to the board of selectmen. And then depending on what the town wants, we'll have them set up opportunities for the employees to come so they can get to know the companies, see what options are out there, whether it's something the town pays for or they pay for themselves. But at least they can see that these are the options, these are what they can get. This is how much it costs, this is how to go about it, et cetera, et cetera.
How was it done in April?
How was it done? It was, you purchased your own short-term. If you want short-term, you want long-term, it's optional. You purchase.
Individual employee will buy it.
Yes. Otherwise, sick, sick time, it's the same way as John described it, which is essentially you got initially, I think it was two weeks sick time. You could carry it over year to year and sick time built up. There was no cap to sick time in April, which was actually very helpful because there were many people who ended up, who ended up going out on, like, surgery where they'd be out for a month or two months, so they would use their collective sick time. The other option they had in April was if they wanted, there was a selective program where you could actually donate your sick time to someone else who was really ill. So if, for instance, you found out you had cancer or something and you'd be out longer for treatment and you only had two months of sick time banked and someone else had, you know, say, three months and they wanted to donate two months to you, they could do that.
What?
The trade-off is, you know, believe me, I like what Ed's saying and Heather. I like that, you know, be able to accrue it. You know, not cash out, but accrue it. But, you know, it's a trade-off, right? Because if that person gets sick, well, the town has to delinquent that person. Where in the case of disability insurance, well, we're not paying that salary that the insurance company is. So, you know, I certainly understand it could go over either way.
I think coming out of, you know, it didn't really dawn on me, Ed said, you know, that money coming out of a department head's budget seems unfair. I think it should be a burden shared with the whole town. It should come out of a different pool because, you know, it's a small, it's a small department and you can't afford that because you can't even afford to get somebody in to cover what you need to be done. It should be shared.
Sorry. I think the idea of collecting some costs and giving some information to us is good. I mean, I personally would never want to say we just let it accrue forever. There should be a certain accrual point that it stops.
I made recommendations that Art has so kindly attached in the letters here and based on other research I've done from other communities. I think my recommendation was, because there was also concern when I talked to individual board of selectmen members at different times to have a cap. So I think I put that those employees who are thirty hours have a maximum of ninety days or six hundred and seventy-five hours. And those who are forty-hour employees have a maximum of ninety days or seven hundred and twenty hours.
Is that compared to other small towns for that?
It's, some small towns have them. They generally have a higher cap. I felt that the concern with the community just coming into the idea of having sick time carry over, there's this huge concern that people are going to have this unlimited amount for years and years. Remember, it's going to take years for them to get up to that number in the first place of the carryover time. But I felt that it would be better to come up with a more conservative number than to go with the higher liberal number and just not have a cap at all, which a lot of communities don't.
Do you have anything to add?
No, I'm listening. I like the idea that they're talking to different insurance companies and investigating our options.
Yes, I concur with all of the above. I think, you know, we could increase sick time, we could allow it to be accrued. I think there's a solution other than what we currently have. So, you know, in regards to where do you want us, where do you want, where do we want you to go is, you know?
I'm going to play the old volunteer card. I'm a volunteer. You know, I need some expertise here that can dig out this information and give us, you know, give the personnel board an idea where we're at and then be able to come back and present to you all. I mean, we'll help out and get here.
What is twenty days? What date does that put us at?
Well, it was, you know, it was a question whether it was, you know, calendar or working days, but I don't think there's anywhere we're going to be close to meet that.
And so the twenty days, they should have to present the result of the open meeting?
No, the bylaw would have to be passed by twenty days.
And if it's not, what happens?
Well, then it goes by the board.
So you would have to have another open meeting and discuss again. So it's no tragedy if it doesn't happen, okay?
Well, just not.
Well, right, just the amount of work that's.
I mean, that's a runaround.
Schedule, schedule a special town meeting and then open, open meeting at the same time. So then you know what's going to happen, so you don't have to scour it.
And then to broaden a good point, you know, this is a hard time of the year because vacations, everybody, you know, so it probably would be better to give us time to compile the data and all in the fall. I think would probably make more sense. I'm sort of over two for bylaws now, so hopefully we'll get one of these passed. The other thing is, I liked what Heather put together. It wasn't just this, it was for vacation time and personal days. And I think it made a lot of sense too. I mean, one week starting vacation is moved. That's not what you see. Some you don't see in industry, two weeks is generally preferred. So I think what she put in, and it is in your package, I think are some good things we need to look at.
What I did was I looked at, I actually sent out on listserv, listserv to the MMPA, or the MPA, one of the two, an email asking folks for what they had for vacation, sick and personal time. Most folks sent me back their actual bylaws or their handbooks, so I had to do a lot of sifting. But I compiled information from about ten. That's about when I ran out of time to do so. And I looked at it and the majority of them, I think there was only one that had one week vacation time. Everyone else started with two. And one of them actually even had writing in it that was kind of cool, which said something to the effect of, you know, they value their employees and they thought it was very important for the employees to be well-rounded and to take good care of themselves and that they couldn't do that if they weren't taking time away from the office. So not just the fact that they had two weeks, but they were strongly encouraged to take two weeks. And as a result, it wasn't really an acceptable practice to carry the time over. They wanted them to use the time. It was important that they found a way to use the time to take care of themselves and get away from the office.
Okay.
So, other, just quickly, other thoughts. The problems we've been running into here in Town Hall is that there are multiple copies of the bylaw. Everybody has a different one. I've seen at least four different ones. So it is important that we, at some point, get a consistent bylaw passed. There was concern that the bylaw would diminish department head authority. That was not the intent, certainly not my intent. I don't think the intent of the folks that worked on it, but we certainly need to look at that and make sure that's not the case.
Is there any examples?
I don't know.
I, I, that wasn't what I said. So may I stand corrected here? What I said was that I had read, I had gone through the manual before the meeting or night before and that in my quick review of it, I put in some pieces, department heads might be using some, I don't know if I just power or authority and how they implemented. So Art said now that that was in the case. I accepted it because I really didn't dig into it. As I said, it was just my quick. And I'm glad to see that some of the things are being reviewed.
There was a question about having ownership or at least putting somewhere, I believe, author of the bylaw. I'm not seeing that done on board, but, you know, again, I'm doing this game. When I see a bylaw, it's a bylaw. I don't see the authorship in most of them. I've looked at, like Heather, I've looked at fifteen or twenty of these. Also documents and other factors, a person asked that should be stated for the performance evaluation. In other words, we probably should have put example of the form and so on and so forth in the, well, it's not the bylaws, the regulations. And then a question that was raised about the personnel documents themselves, they should be confidential. We made a statement to, we said, sup to the neighbor. We said to the extent possible. And a person thought that we should take that out, which we certainly will. The last question I had, because I wasn't sure, and I'm a lawyer, is does the bylaw have to be passed by a town meeting? Remember, it's a bylaw, it's regulations. I know regulations, you guys can certainly approve that, but I don't know how it works here as far as the, with this bylaw have to go in front of the town. I don't know what you've done to the past.
I'm just curious, how, did you amend certain things and keep, say, you're only changing ten percent of it, twenty percent of it? Or what, what do you, you know?
We changed the bylaw. We actually added some better language along, you know, discrimination-type language and such that we have Jim Colerano who's, he actually called an expert, but he's certainly an expert in this field. And we put in some new, we think important in the bylaw, information in the bylaw.
There are a lot of changes.
So he's not talking about just the personal policies, so to speak. He's talking about the actual meat of the bylaw at the very beginning.
I mean, I mean, it, the bylaw has a process for adding and deleting certain things, but I think that's on a minimum basis. But I don't know how that can be interpreted. And I think you need to have a lawyer to tell you, yes, you got to go and have it be done.
So can we find out from Town Council what do we do next?
I'm pretty sure, I think the regulations and all of that, that's separate and you would approve that for the bylaw itself. And again, I wasn't sure.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Thanks for that work.
Any other questions? Mrs. Fontaine?
I have a question for Ed because I believe when Mike Hill was still on board, he voted to send the manual that I gave you to Town Council. And I think you authorized fifteen hundred dollars for the review. Did that happen?
No, I don't think it ever happened. I know that they wanted, it wasn't enough money. They wanted more money to do that, okay? But what Art's talking, what I'm talking about Art is, there's a phrase on how you can add and subtract certain things to the existing bylaw. And it said you, it would be done at a selectman's meeting. But he says the intent now is almost the whole bylaw has, has certain changes to it. And I don't think that is going to be appropriate, but I don't want to say we can go forward without having Town Council approving that.
The actual bylaw, they added, you know, some verbiage in there. I don't think you can change the enabling legislation portion of it. You can change the regulations.
Well, there's a process. I don't know how far we can deviate from that process.
Yeah, I think by law still you have to go to the town meeting. I think we talked about that the other night.
So let's just find out all the information surrounding this and then we'll have the official answer. Is there any other discussion? No. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Can we move to something extra when you check next week?
So I'm just going to skip ahead, I'm going to skip one thing and go to the next one. The volunteer positions, there's currently openings for positions that are voluntary in nature. Both appointed and elected are listed in your packets. Once we review them and post it for twenty days, we can appoint volunteers to those positions, if, those people who submit letters of interest for the openings. Any questions or concerns about that? After that, we have the administrative assistant to the town administrator. That position was posted on Craigslist, the MMA website, the Gazette on Saturday, the Facebook, Twitter, Facebook and Twitter accounts and our website. We've already received half dozen to a dozen applications. Some are good, some are bad. You know, there's a whole bunch of stuff. Heather's requesting that the Board of Selectmen consider allowing the interviews and hiring decisions to be made by herself and me as the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I wonder what your thoughts and questions and concerns are about that, if any?
I'm good with it. It's her direct assistant reporting directly to her.
Exactly.
I feel comfortable with you working with her.
Okay. Mrs. Fontaine?
Was that done previously, that way?
It's a different position.
It was a previous town administrator.
I don't think that position was ever posted to begin with, as far as I can. That's a really big conversation, I think, but I think that it was not ever posted appropriately to begin with. So I don't know that it's new or old, it just is.
Going back to Diana originally?
No, the position also preceded Diana. So the person who was doing the administrative work preceded the actual town administrator. So the town administrator never had the opportunity to actually select an assistant for her.
Reggie was already in the office.
Well, my comment is, as a department head.
Reggie was in the office when we hired Diane. Brenda was not in the office. Reggie was hired because Brenda was out sick.
As her boss, I think she should be the one interviewing and then making a recommendation and go through the process like we normally do. But I have no problem with the chairman and her making the recommendations to us.
Well, they're still going to go through the process.
Yeah.
Interviewing and all that. We don't want to deviate from that. That's fine.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Need a motion or anything like that?
Sure. It doesn't hurt, right?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to talk about the building commissioner position? Currently, it's posted until filled. I don't, I don't think we've had any real discussions about past applicants.
We did last meeting.
Some. Do you want to talk about this one tonight?
I'll wait.
Do I have a, ask Heather a couple of questions?
Sure.
Heather, now Rich has gone as of today, okay? What is our status with somebody backfilling that for the time being?
Paul Healy, he's our alternate that you guys selected to fill the spot for the time being. He's a building commissioner, so we're good on that piece.
Okay.
Paul is coming in as needed to deal with all of the applications that come in, to review any plans. Right now, I want to say we have between twelve and fifteen building permits, which is full last week. coverage dealt with before he left. So those at some point are going to come to fruition and those will become more of an issue later. Essentially, as we need Paul, he's there. He's doing inspections on nights and on weekends and will do his best to be here on Tuesday night, but he can't be in the office hours.
And other than building inspector, we don't have any zoning enforcement?
Not really, unfortunately. Paul has a full-time job elsewhere, so he does not have spare time to read up on our code. Anytime he has questions, you know, I can, I can work with him the best I can and, you know, we're making calls. We need to, we're going to try our best to keep things at bay as much as we can. But to go without someone for zoning for a long period of time is kind of rough. As you know, we have antiquated zoning laws, for instance, non.
But they are zoning laws.
Non-furred animals would be an example. That's the one that people say regulate chickens. So it's a, it's a fun one and that's the one that brings up the rooster issues, which we're currently dealing with.
Any other discussion about this?
About non-furred animals or?
I really, I really liked this gentleman that was here tonight. And I think he's, you know, I would be in support of offering him a position.
How long does it take to take, like, really, how long does it take the classes, to take the classes? How long does it take?
He said he would be.
By Christmas, like. But you can't hire him, he can't actually work until.
No, no, but he can't, it works.
He can work and, even though he's not officially.
He's got the first exam done.
He's working, he'd be working under another building commissioner for the time being. Rich sent us language the other day of how to do a conditional appointment for the time being. So like where he is now as a local building inspector, he has to work under a building commissioner. So we just have to have someone to say, okay, it's all right for him to work under my license.
Rich did, Rich had to do the same thing. He had, he had difficulty passing a test a few years back and he worked under the Holyoke Commissioner.
I thought he was nice. I like, you know, that he's familiar with the area in the first place. I thought he was personable. He seemed like he would fit in well. Of all of them, he's my favorite.
Yeah, I want to put a nice ring definitely on finishing. Like I said, Mom used to work for me, so I've seen some of the properties they built and they were quality, high-end, very respected. So I know he knows the property to get out there and inspect it, but he definitely knows how to build something.
Well, I'd make a motion to hire him.
You, how about? I think we need to.
Some contingencies in there.
Yeah, we got to do background checks.
Background check, references.
I'm adding on getting full licensure and.
We've already checked one of his references. We always check at least one prior to submitting them to the board. The one we checked this case was the, I believe it's the building commissioner. And he had, I think it was probably one of the best references we could actually talk to out of everyone. Although other ones had said, you know, they're excellent, they're excellent, they're excellent. This guy actually didn't really let me get a word in edgewise, asked the follow-up question. And then I went off on roosters for a minute and the gentleman went back to tell me more good things about Tom.
He didn't do roosters.
I just want to talk about roosters.
I would make a motion to offer the position to him and contingent on the things that we want to see happen in a certain time, a timely fashion. I'm like, I'm guessing, well, background check here.
Should it be your first motion? First one was, there was a first and a second. You said, I want to hire him.
Oh, yeah, I'm making, let me, I'll redraw, we'll draw all the prior.
Thank you.
Verbiage I've spoken.
Thank you very much.
In the past five seconds or so. But I would offer the position to this young man based on certain conditions, based on, you know, his references, background check and a timely completion of the required classes to become a commissioner, okay?
Did you get that, Heather?
When you say background check, what do you mean, David?
Don't we do a quarry because it goes to homes and stuff like that?
We go with higher rate, correct?
Well, last time we did higher rate, I think it was five hundred dollars. So remember, we're in the balanced budget, so we don't really have five hundred dollars to spend on higher rate. And the other problem we've had with higher rate is they've been very.
Tough.
Yes, on time orders. Now, what we could have them do if we wanted to do the quarry part. Now, what we could have him do, if we wanted to do the query part, is we could have him do a query and submit it to Massachusetts himself and any other residencies he's had in other states, which usually cost ten to twenty dollars each to do, or, you know, we could pay for it, what have you, but then-
Ask a question, since he's working with East Hampton, can you ask another community if he had a query checked on?
We can ask, but they can't share with us.
I know.
But I could probably ask the question and see if they'll say yes or no. So if they say yes, is that sufficient to the board, that he's had a query and he's allowed to work there, or you want your own query?
Have previous building inspectors had query checks?
Yes.
Okay, so then we probably don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it, I don't wanna be penny wise and powerful with you, you know, save a few dollars and find out there's issues later on in the long run.
Yeah, so the ten to twenty dollar deal, it sounds like a way to go. I would, I wasn't happy with higher rate, they dragged everything out.
Let's find out how much it is.
Can, can I, could you, the school does an awful lot of query checks.
Mm-hmm.
Could you call them and ask them if they could, if we can piggyback on their query check process?
They do that all the time.
I think, uh, the council agent does, and they did one on me, when I volunteered, so he did-
Well, I understand why.
Heather, Heather, have them volunteer for the council and agent, get it done that way.
The council and the, for the board and for the volunteers, and the school, 'cause I work at a school, they, and they're paid, because the school and, and senior center don't pay, they have some special-
Do you know what they use for the query check now? Would they go through to do the query check?
It's a state, it's one. It used to be, um, yeah, you get it right away.
It doesn't take long.
No, because you've got to really get it before they have somebody contact with.
So are we choosing not to use higher rate at this point?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's smart.
John's abstaining.
Can, do we notify the other applicants that their position has been filled?
I have, um, notified everyone except for Damian that the position, that we were not offering that individual job. But I've all notified Damian.
Okay.
We need to bring him in, in here to discuss the job in terms.
Right.
Right, so can you put him on the schedule?
I wouldn't get rid of our other candidate just yet.
Do you wanna hold off? I would, I mean, if he comes in, something doesn't work out, I wanna see.
Yeah.
So are we meeting next Tuesday?
We, we can go back to that if you want another minute, but essentially, um, we weren't scheduled to have a meeting next Tuesday because we've been on, we're trying to get on the every other week schedule. However, Vicki has requested that we have a meeting sometime next week, preferably not Tuesday, but preferably later in the week, because we have to do the end of the year transfers. She's asked for it to hold off to the end of the week at some point, because right now Joyce has been embarked, like, completely bombarded with the amount of end of the year bills. So they won't even be through, most of them, to do the bill warrants and the FY fourteen and the first FY fifteen bill warrant, until at least Wednesday.
Well, we scheduled one for Thursday.
If we can do, I think Liz is out of town, so we would need just three people sometime on Thursday, it doesn't have to be at night, it can be whatever time, three people are available to meet.
Yeah, I can't do it till early evening at best.
Six thirty, and then go from there.
Six thirty on Thursday?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Jackie?
Yep.
I won't be here.
Okay, and now with the meeting, we'll just have the end of the year transfers, the, um, bill warrants, and I think there's one other small item on. I don't remember what it is, or I tell you.
All right, we're almost done. There are-
Motion to adjourn.
Um, so the non-school employee rates for fiscal fifteen, the auditors have suggested that we begin to file that tracks the pay for all employees over time. Heather has been working with Donna, come up with the spreadsheet and distributed it to all departments, requesting that they, um, fill in the current pay and time off amounts for each individual person in the fiscal fourteen and fiscal fifteen years under the balanced budget. You had that in your packet, so you could see, it's just a list of people, how much time they have off, how much they get paid, and something that the auditors, um, suggested that we have on file.
And they also want a beginning pay for every employee.
Where it started, where they started.
At the beginning of each year, they want a, 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 a pay grade for every individual employee of the town that comes through our payroll.
Yes, that's what we're trying to accomplish with the sheet, and this sheet, I just like to say, it's not complete, we're still missing the police department and for some reason the fire chief. And I don't think we have Christie on it, because she's a temporary employee, so it just, it didn't, unless it's on there, and I didn't think of it. Um, and I don't think, I don't know if we have Lori on there, either, she assesses up this, but it did work. It is, but I think we're only missing those two departments at this point, everyone else is on there. Um, but it is a start in the direction that they're asking for. The idea is, you know, to try to get everything as close as we can to where it needs to be for the first of the fiscal year, which is today. So everyone's on the same page, the board of selectmen have the opportunity to just take a look, and it still hasn't been brought through the treasurer's office, but the idea is for them to take a look and make sure that they have in their records the right amount of vacation time, sick time, personal time, that everyone thinks they have, so we're on the same page. Ultimately, in the future, what will happen is going forward, starting next fiscal year, is the treasurer's office will be able to say, according to our records, John, you're entitled to two weeks vacation, four days sick time, such and such. So that he's just checking with us, and he's not telling us what he has.
Um, okay, so-
Just a quick question, is there a maximum hours that can be carried forward yearly?
Right now, according to the bylaws, the answer is nothing, uh, one week of vacation time with approval.
With approval.
Well, like, the highway, there's some guys with two hundred hours, and others under.
That's their current vacation time.
You can only carry one week forward.
That's not carried forward, that's their current vacation time for FY fourteen. FY fifteen.
That what, two hundred?
Two hundred hours. So it must mean he's been there for forty six, forty eighty, one twenty, um, one sixty, five weeks vacation time, so it maps. No, I, I'm telling you, this is just what was submitted to us, we haven't had a chance to double check.
Right, so take a look and highlight anything you think isn't right.
That's why in the future, we'd like to have it so it comes from the treasurer's office and not vice versa. We're working on it, one step at a time.
Uh, we have open time for the public. Anybody? Mrs. Swanson.
I just wanna make sure you're, you're gonna hold off on the personal bylaw until the fall, is that-
We're gonna hold off until we get some more information and some studies and statistics and dollar amounts and-
Well, is it gonna be the fall, 'cause I know it was-
I don't think anybody has, I don't think it's on anybody's agenda to do any time in the next eight weeks.
Yeah, because it was, we were talking, it was summertime, and we're gone, all right, okay.
Okay, um, do we need to, we're gonna go into executive session, do we need to go, oh, Nilda. No, we didn't sign it, and we talked about it, and the, one of the concerns we brought up was that, um, currently, um, currently it's over budget by seventeen hundred dollars, we're wondering if all the receipts have been entered. Yeah. Yeah.
I talked to Jennifer, and we're completely, in fact, I think the expense report showed that we were zero, so.
When I looked at the expense report that I got today, it said that we're, it was over budget by seventeen hundred dollars. That was our question, and then we were gonna ask about the, um, fees that are a dollar, a dollar fifty, and two dollars, and, you know, if there were, if we weren't going to be even, was there any conversation about increasing those fees in order to cover or not?
We talked about that in the past, particularly that year that we came to the board and dated, and Edward, you know, you know, overspending, sometimes the FRTA will come up with additional money, and, you know, that particular year that were, you know, it was a wider need. So we committed that not only were we gonna stay within the confines of that, of contract, but if we needed to look at, you know, like Highland Valley Health, you know, we spend more than that contract because the need was high. So we worked with the county account and say, you guys support us to the two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, it would really then-
We had one question, and you answered it. The question we had was, there was a seventeen hundred dollar deficit we saw on paper, but we also thought there was receipts that weren't applied to it yet, which you're saying it wasn't. So we were concerned, do we encourage him to raise the rates to make sure there's no deficit, especially going to next year? Answer our question, so we can sign that contract.
Sure, because we talked to FRTA, and, you know, is it, in terms of the rates, that really, you want, you don't want it to be, um, a burden to seniors. And they are, sometimes they are generous and tipping and stuff like that.
Well, after reading it, I mean, if they go to the doctor's office, that's one fee, and they go, well, I got a prescription, I gotta go to pharmacy, that's another fee, and then I wanna go home, is that a third fee?
No, no, from the point, you know, it's a round trip. However, you know, you have to take into consideration, which is something I learned last year when we talked about it, is that, you know, you leave somebody off at the doctor's office, and, um, they may have to wait for the driver because they're out on another run picking someone else, and if you go to Springfield, which is a long distance, you're eating up a long time, it's still the same thing, and it's, I mean, it's a real, real big benefit, I mean, they may have to wait, but they're, they enjoy the ride.
So given the new information we have addressing our concerns, do I have a motion to sign the Southampton Council on Aging contract for the-
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to move into open session after executive session, or are we all set?
Uh, town administrators' group.
Town administrators' report, ready?
We have ten seconds here.
Ready?
Read.
Go.
All right, building commissioner, just an update, Rich has officially retired, Paul Healy's on call as our alternate building inspector. The audit is now officially complete, we will work on scheduling for an earlier audit next year in January. Library summer reading program has begun, check that out, um, that's all I have.
I'm not even done writing my name.
Question, question, is the auditors' report sent to the proper authorities, like by council and all that?
Uh, it should be.
I just wanna make sure it's done, because that's one of the reasons we got in trouble.
We should be all set.
No, that's a question. They're supposed to mail us the official documents they can hand out. When I get it, you again.
And also, can I get a copy of the additional questions that you presented that Art, I think Art has them in terms of the suggestion you made with regard to the personnel?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, I'm going, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, ladies.
Um, we are gonna move into executive session, we will not be returning to open session.
Is it a quick one? Claire, you can wait.
Um, I lost it.
Oh, no, my son, uh, left her off, and she's sitting there waiting for me.
Um, so we're gonna move into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, Number six, to consider the purchase, purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. If the charity plays in an open meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body by roll call, vote please.
Mr. Lawrence?
Martin, aye.
Sears, aye.
Aye.